Thank you, everybody, and welcome again to our foreign education and school spirit. So you're heard me here. I'm hoping to make this an annual tradition made it up last April, too. I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session this evening to discuss personnel and legal matters. I also just wanted to mention very briefly a webinar that I attended last night, which was called Other Than Sad. We talked a lot about mental health and mental well-being, and I want to thank the district for the increase in programs surrounding these topics. And I'd like to specifically thank Mrs. Censkemler, April Radley, for her work in organizing this program, which was hosted by Emily Shinko from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And she's also a North Hills alumni. Suicide is not an easy topic to discuss, but I found this webinar to be extremely informative, and I would encourage any parents to watch the replay, which is on YouTube if you're able to. There's a lot of great information in there. I learned a lot, and I found it really, really useful. So again, I'd just like to thank the district for providing this information. Do we have any other board member comments this evening? Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Patrick Webber, who is our director of athletics. She presented public education.
Thanks, Mrs. Mathis. Josh, come on up. It is my pleasure and honor to bring tonight to the board meeting Josh Bunyard, our senior swimmer, who was a WPIL champion this past season, as well as a PIA double A champion, as well in the 100 backstroke. Josh has signed to continue swimming at the Ohio State University, and he's going to plan to major in environmental science. I did some record digging. It is believed that he's the only male state champion that North Hills has ever had in swimming. So that's a huge accomplishment. Currently, he's ranked the 13th overall swimmer slash recruit in the state of Pennsylvania per college swimming, and he's been a WPIL and a state qualifier for all four years in his high school career. In the WPIL in ninth grade, he was a part of the 200 freestyle relay team that finished fourth place. In 10th grade, he was sixth in the 100 backstroke. In 11th grade, he was a second place finisher in the 100 freestyle and a second place finisher in the 100 back. And this year, as a senior, he won the 100 freestyle with a time of 45.52, placing him first in the Whipple, and the first place finish in the 100 backstroke at the Whipple finals with a time of 49.08. And that was an Upper St. Clair pool record when he set that. It is great and amazing to hear that as he got and grew through his career in the state, he qualified, but as a senior, he was a champion in the 100 backstroke with 49.07, and that's an All-American time. And he got the fourth place finish in the 100 freestyle at 45.65. When I talked to Josh yesterday, he wanted to make sure that he went from 23rd to first in the backstroke. So that's impressive. And it's just kudos to his hard work and his dedication that he's done that. Right now, he's training for the 18 and under Spring Cup that's held by USA Swimming, and that's going to take place in Richmond, Virginia from April 29th to May 2nd. And when he's not swimming, Josh enjoys taking pictures of nature, landscape, and people as per his Instagram page. Check him out at Boggs Picks. We are honored tonight to have his parents here, as well as assistant coach Shannon Metzler, to honor Josh. So with great honor, Josh Bunyard, Whipple and PIA double A champion. Congratulations, Josh.
Congratulations again. That's really amazing. Dr. Manerina, you are our next superintendent through board.
Congratulations again, Josh. We wish you the best of luck. That's awesome. All right. Hopefully, this is going to be brief because I get to begin your death by PowerPoint tonight. So unfortunately, I think everybody knows that based upon the case counts in the county, Allegheny County has slipped back into substantial. But the, I guess the good news behind that is that they've also changed some of the guidance out of the state of Pennsylvania. So long story short for the North Hill School District is we are operating in a hybrid or blended model by the definition of the state. The Wednesday virtual option allows us to be able to continue as a hybrid model. So the Wednesday virtual option is going to stay through May 27th. We published our calendars last time in April, for April and May, and you can see those virtual Wednesdays, or really for the next five weeks. And then after that, we will finish off the year with a full day. The last two weeks are only four-day weeks, so they will be fully in person those last two weeks in May. But that's what allows us to maintain a hybrid or blended model. So that's where we are. The big thing with this being back to substantial is that at this point, we are now required to follow the closure protocols as recommended by the Health Department. So again, every case we have, we contact the Health Department, have a conversation with them. We are tracking our cases in that 14-day rolling window to the day that they are beginning their symptoms. And then we will have a conversation with the Allegheny County Health Department if any of our schools reach those thresholds, the potential of closing. And again, that's a decision that's made by the Health Department in collaboration with us based upon the number of cases that we have. So that's where we are with community transmission levels, and as far as our schedule is concerned over the next eight weeks of school. But the good news is we're going to continue with some of our annual track and field events. On Friday, May 7th, at Marjorie Stadium, we're going to have 350 5th graders from all four of elementary schools participate in their annual transition to middle school event with the track and field day. The athletics and the health and safety plan will be in effect with social distancing, hand sanitizing stations, and masks will be required for all events except for those, for all participants, except for whenever they are participating in an actual event. There will be no spectators, unfortunately. This event will be just for the students and for the staff to be able to kind of manage the events and manage the day for our students. But there will be lots of pictures and videos that will be shared through our social media. I want to just thank the PE department for making this a possible event. I know they've been working hard for the last couple of months to try to figure out a way that we can have this event and keep students safe, create some different events for them so that there's not too much idle time or dead time for them to be just kind of sitting around on the field or the track. So the good news is we're able to do this. We're able to do it safely, and we're able to have that track and field day that is so important to us that unfortunately we had to miss last year. So with that being said, we're also planning field days at each of our elementary schools. And you can see at High Cliff and at McIntyre, Monday, May 17th will be their field day, and at Ross and at Westview on Friday, May 14th will be their field day. At the same time, the week of May 10th is going to be the middle school field days. There will be one field day, there will be one field day for each of the grades, six, seven, and eight. And we're doing it the week of May 10th so that in the event there is rain, we have a couple of weeks to be able to make sure that those events are able to take place for our students. This is going to be a little bit different since it's going to be on the hilltop. It'll be a carnival-style atmosphere with track and field events occurring pretty much on the baseball field, on the tennis courts, and we're going to utilize the parking lot. So we're going to have some different games for them in the grassy areas of the hilltop, whether it's cornhole, or ring toss, or I think it's called ladder ball, or as I like to call it golf ball tossy thingy. So as we move to the summer, our iPads, as you recall, are leased. In the past, we didn't have 4,600 iPads out there in circulation. It was pretty much, you know, a seven through 12, seven through 11 endeavor. It was easy for us to be able to collect those iPads, redistribute them the next year to that group of students. Now that we're 4,600 iPads in the hands of students, we've been talking a lot about allowing the students to keep their iPads for the summer and then bring them back on the first day of school next year. So this is the plan that we put forward. If a parent would like to have their child keep their iPad over the summer, they can. It is encouraged and it's required if you're going to participate in any of the district's summer learning programs. So if you're planning on your child participating in any of those summer programs that we have talked about over the last couple of meetings, your child's going to need their iPad. So that's an important thing to notice. To keep the device, you have to complete and submit an online form, and so that's going to be available on our website. Please review the technology policies and user agreements because those will still be in effect. Again, this is a district device. It's not a personal device. We're just, again, allowing you to keep those over the summer. For support, again, it's a district device. You cannot take it to a third party to have any of the damages fixed, you know, whether it's a broken screen, or you take it to the Apple Store. They're going to tell you to bring it back to us. Okay, so we are going to have a support portal available, and we'll be able to technical troubleshoot, fix iPad devices all throughout the summer. So if anything happens to it, or there's broken or anything, you can bring them in here to be fixed. You are responsible for a lost iPad or a broken iPad. When we get to the beginning of the school year, you will have to pay for all damages. But the good news is the insurance goes through the first day of school. So if you have insurance and something were to happen to that device over the summer, the insurance will cover it. But you are responsible for damages and lost iPads when we get to the beginning of the school year. What if you don't want it? All right, good. So if you don't want to keep your iPad over the summer, and you'd like us to keep it safe and secure for your child, you can simply return the device in its case with a charging cord and the block that helps us to charge it on the student's last day of school. We'll have, you know, greater details about who you give that to. It's most certainly going to be their homeroom teacher. We will collect them from there and then move that iPad to your child's next homeroom teacher so that it's there for them on the first day of school when they arrive here in August. And we will also make sure that you receive a receipt so that we know and you both and you know that that device is in the district. Okay? So if you're looking to keep that iPad over the summer, you certainly can. Please fill out the form on the website. If you don't want it, you're going to be able to turn that in to us on the last day of school like we always have. A new feature that we've been working with over the last couple of weeks, and we finally got this feature really to the point where we wanted it, and it's called JAMP Parent. So JAMP is the system that manages our 4,600 iPads. JAMP Parent will now allow you to manage your child's iPad through an iOS device. It has to be an iOS device. It's either an Apple iPhone or an Apple iPad. It will not work on Android, unfortunately. But if you have an iPhone or an iPad, you'll be able to manage your child's device. You can restrict apps. You can restrict app categories, including social media, games, and music. You can limit screen time. You can create schedules based upon your child's routine. If you, for example, said to your child, when you are home, you have to do homework between 6:00 and 8:00. So between 6:00 and 8:00, the following apps are not available to your child. You'll be able to schedule when the iPad sees the apps and when it does not see the apps. This will be, all these features will be disabled while the children are in the district. Okay, so the parent will not be able to turn on and off apps while the child is in the district in a learning environment. At that point, the district controls the apps during school hours. There will be a video tutorial and a step-by-step instruction on our website so that if this is something you aren't interested in, that you would like to gain control over the parental, basically parental settings on your child's iPad, you certainly could do that. It's called JAMP Parent, and the instructions are available on the website. Okay, so a lot of things I've been dealing with this week has been a Duquesne Light project in the Brookmead area. So Brookmead is an area that has underground wiring, and fortunately, and unfortunately, Duquesne Light is beginning a project starting on Monday to replace the underground wiring. So the bad news for us is that we don't know how this project is going to progress. When, where, how fast? As they're wiring each house individually, we don't know what they're going to run into. We don't know how long it's going to take. But the issue that we're going to run into is we have five virtual Wednesdays remaining. And so if you have a house that is without power, they're without internet, and there's no way for their children to be educated that day. So I talked to a couple of people at Ross Township. There's no way with a project this size, we can ask them to not work on Wednesdays. It's just not possible. So we came up with Plan B, and the unfortunate part about this plan, also, you as a person in Brookmead is not going to know that your power's going to be out the next day until 5:00 that day. So it's not like we can plan for this. It's not like we even know which houses are going to be affected and when. So what we're going to do, we spoke to ABC Transit. ABC Transit will take a bus into the Brookmead development on the virtual Wednesdays that we have. If you are a family that is going to be without power on a virtual Wednesday, put your child on the bus. Our buildings are open. Our buildings are staffed. Our libraries will be open, and they will be, we will have adults in there to monitor the students. Bring your iPad, bring your headphones. Students can be in the library to learn that day. We are also feeding with our grab-bag lunches, so the cafeteria is open for students, and then we can put them on the bus and take them home that day as well. So if you are in that situation where power's going to be out of your house on a virtual Wednesday, you don't have a hotspot or something like that that you could link into that day, you can put your child on the bus instead of the school. We'll take care of them. So that's the only real contingency plan we were able to come up with, and particularly whenever we don't know. We don't know what day your house is going to be out of power, for how long, who and when. So I think this is the best that we could do. So that way, our students can still be educated on those days that they're virtual, in the event that their house is without power. They can come into the school. That is only for those that are impacted by the power failure. That is not for all students in Brookmead to come to school on Wednesdays. And lastly, tonight, I'm able to announce that yesterday David Lieberman made an announcement to his faculty that he is retiring. It's something that the board has known about for about a month, but we wanted to give him the opportunity to notify his faculty. So he notified his faculty yesterday. So I'd just like to congratulate Dave. He joined our district in 1997 as a high school math teacher. He became my assistant principal in 2006 when I was the high school principal. He was then promoted to the Ross principal in 2008, became our middle school principal in 2015, and congratulations, Dave has decided to retire this year, and his last day in the district will be July 31st. We will be posting for the middle school principal position tomorrow because it's not, there's not too many days between now and July 31st. So we're going to have to get this process rolling as we search for our next middle school principal. So I just wanted to take an opportunity formally to congratulate Dave and wish Dave the best since we're able to make that announcement official. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. First of all, I have to be honest, there's technical problems behind the scenes. The board members that are on the phone are now on Zoom, but hopefully they can hear me.
Go ahead. Speak some more.
Or not. Okay. And then my question was about the numbers of kids that are being quarantined at the middle school and the high school and the elementary schools. Any idea how many are currently being quarantined, or have been quarantined, or how that is going?
So again, the North Hill School District doesn't quarantine. Allegheny County Health Department does. We work with them to identify close contacts, and then they quarantine. But because it's going to take them so long to notify you, it's your household, our nurses are making the phone calls so that our families know that they are in close contact and they're being quarantined. But we're not quarantining you, the Health Department is. Okay, the next question is, anytime we, so CDC has said that we are safe inside of three feet in schools, and we are. So the closest our students are is four feet in any of our classrooms. Most of them are four and a half. They are six feet in the cafeterias with masks off, all that fun stuff you already know about. What they have not changed is the close contact distance. The close contact distance remains six feet. So in the event we have a positive case and that child is in the school, we have to work with the Health Department to establish a list of students they are going to quarantine that are inside that six-foot bubble. So anytime we have a case, we are about 18 to 22 students that were quarantining because of the bus as well. We just, I just did a survey for Allegheny County. So since we came back to school in January, February, I think it is now, since February, we have, the district in Allegheny County has had to quarantine about 260 students. That was as of yesterday. So we had a few cases today, but as I said, any case that we get is normally, if they're in school the day that they are exhibiting symptoms, it's about 18 to 22 students.
Okay, thank you.
The other good news behind that is part of the survey as well. Of that 260 or so that we've quarantined, we've had four positive cases that were connected to any of those situations. And Allegheny County is not even certain that they were, as a result of being in our quarantine list, because they were sick at the beginning of the quarantine. So they may have been exposed prior to being identified as a close contact.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've been advised that we all need to really speak into our microphones so that the people on Zoom can hear us. So are there any other questions on Dr. Manerina's presentation?
I have a question. Just theoretically, if someone has lost the iPad case or the plug, what should they do? What would, what happens then? Just theoretically?
So they're like $10,000 apiece. Just notify your principal. They'll help us to track it down. The cords and the cables, I get that. I mean, they're going to disappear. We know that. It's a minimal expense in order to replace it, but that's how it's going to go. Whenever we have to collect them, you're going to be responsible to turn in the plug and the cord. If you don't have it, it's whatever the cost of that plug or cord is to replace it at that time. The cases, we can always get another case. Now, those are not keyboard cases, right? They're the rubber bumper cases. I'm not sure how much those are. Jerry, do you know offhand how much they are?
No, they're not that expensive.
Yeah, they're not. I'm going to say they're twenty.
They're like $30 apiece or something.
Yeah, they're like $20 or $30. So yeah, that's all district-owned equipment. And so we will have to either collect it or collect for it when the time comes. So keep searching.
Any other questions from the board members present now? Do either of the board members on Zoom have any questions or comments?
You should be able to unmute yourself.
If you do, unmute yourself and speak. Okay. I'll take that as a no. All right. Next, we are going to move on to public comments on agenda items only. It doesn't seem that we have anybody here in person that would make a public comment. Do we have anybody on Zoom participating virtually that would like to make a public comment?
We do have some participants, but no one raised their hand.
Okay, so if you are attending on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand virtually now, and we will read the participation policy and bring you up to speak. No? Okay. All right. Next, we'll move on to finance, which I will be taking this evening because Dr. Nolish is not here. The first item we have for you is a presentation from Mr. Justin Vancheri with the district's audited financial statements from the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. If you can't hear me, if you have any trouble, please let me know. As you mentioned, I'm going to give you the short summary over the 630-20 financial statements. Anytime there's any questions, please let me know, and we can answer them. Or at the end, I'll definitely answer questions as well. So basically, the first, most important thing is the independent auditors report. So at 630-20, we issued an unmodified opinion. What that means is your financial statements presented fairly in all material respects with basis of account. That is the highest opinion that we can give as independent auditors. That is the opinion that you as a board want. What that means is your financial statements are good. There were no problems noticed during the audit. Moving on to the governmental funds, going over the balance sheet. In the general fund at 630-20, you had non-spendable funds of $290,000. What the majority of that was prepaid expenses for future healthcare costs. You had assigned funds of right around $7.5 million. Once again, those are assigned for future other post-employment benefit costs and future Peasars retirement costs. And then you had unassigned funds of $5.2 million. That's 5.2. That gets you right around 6.25% of your budgeted expenditures. That's right up within the guidelines of where the state wants a district your size to be. So that's a very positive number to have there. The district also has a capital projects fund. At 630-20, you had committed funds of right around $3.6 million, obviously committed for your future capital expenditures. And the district also has a debt service fund with funds in there, about $164,000, obviously for future debt expenditures. Moving on to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance. Total revenues for the year were $83 million. You had expenditures around $82.2 million. You had other financing sources and uses of right around $1.1 million, the largest of that being the leases for the iPads that were had during the year, for a total change in fund balance during the year of $1.9 million to deposit. If you look right below that, you can see that during the year, the district was budgeting a loss of $1.1 million. When I go down to the next section, we'll explain exactly where those variances came in and the reason for that change there. So in the general fund budget actual, I'm going to go over just the totals here. Your revenues were over budget, $1.8 million, roughly 2.2%. In that number, if we remove the issuance of the capital lease, which are usually not budgeted for, especially this year, you know, it came in at the end, that would get you with over budget of $226,000. So being over budget, about $200,000 on an $80 million budget on the revenue side, that's phenomenal. That tells us as your auditors that basically management is budgeting on a realistic expectation, and they're constantly monitoring that. So that's very good. During the year, the expenditures were under budget, right around $1.1 million, roughly 1.4%. We always tell all of our districts, basically anywhere below 3%, that tells us that they're doing a good job, especially this year, what we've seen districts-wide. We do about 35 school districts. Most school districts were under budget in the expenditures. We anticipate that going into the current year you're in, that that number to flip and be over budget on expenditures, just with the way the shutdown ended, and by the time goods were actually received by the district, a lot of that, those expenditures got pushed into the new year as well. To kind of break down your revenues a little bit further, your local revenues were about $62 million. State funds, about $20 million. Federal funds in the general fund, about $751,000. And other financing sources, about $1.6 million. To break down the expenditures, about $52 million. Support services, about $20.1 million. Non-instructional services, 1.4. Total debt service expenditures for the year, right around $8 million. And then a transfer to other fund, it was a transfer to the capital projects fund, right around $520,000. Kind of going over the other funds the district has, the capital projects fund during the year had about $73,000 in revenues. That was all interest earnings. About $800,000 in expenditures. That was related to some roof repairs and roof replacements that were finally finished up in the current year. And then, as I mentioned previously, the transfer from the general fund of $520,000 for a total change in fund balance, a loss of $290,000. For the debt service fund, local sources, obviously, that's interest earnings, right around $3.4, $3,400. The expenditures and the other financing sources and uses, those combined, those are mainly related to the refunding of debt the district did in October of 2019. I'll kind of get into the particulars of those numbers when we get down to the debt section on the footnote side. But there's a lot of payments out and refunding of bonds in those numbers to get you at a total change in fund balance in your debt service fund, a loss of $54,000. The district also has a food service fund. All we like to do here, we like to just point out the change in net position for the year ended. This number does exclude any adjustment related to the net pension liability that's associated with that fund. As you can see here, on June 30th, 2020, you had a loss of $192,000. When you're comparing that to the previous year of a gain of about $145,000, one thing to keep in mind with this fund is overall, if you looked at it over a 10-year span, the idea would be that it would all net out to zero income. So last year, we had a higher income. This year, obviously, you know, that could have flipped a little bit. And then with school being shut down, once again, that's what we're seeing pretty much across all of our schools there. Kind of going into the footnotes, there's about 60 pages of footnotes in the actual financial statement, so I'm just going to touch upon some of the highlighted ones here. Obviously, the largest of that being the net pension liability associated with Peasars. So your net pension liability at 630-20 is $122.8 million. Obviously, that's a very large number. To put that into perspective, your overall percentage of the total Peasars liability is about 0.24%. So the total Peasars liability actually went down a little bit, it's about $44 billion. You have a very small percentage. It still turns into a very large number. One thing I always like to remind everyone with this number especially, this is not a liability like a loan payable or a liability like a loan payable or a bond payable that you can pay off early. The district is making all the required contributions that they're required to make each year to pay that off based upon the percentages that Peasars requires. Moving to the, probably the other largest item on your, in the footnotes there, the long-term debt sections. At 6/30/20, you have general obligation bonds of roughly $46.6 million outstanding. As I mentioned, during the year, there was an issuance of the 2019 series bonds of $15.8 million. That was used to refund the series 2010 bond of a value of about $17.2 million. So if you look at that principal retired number there, in total of 22.7, in that number is that 17.2 of the 2010 bonds that were retired based on the refunding. You also have general obligation notes outstanding, right around $1.6 million. Of that during the year, you paid off principal in the amount of $142,000. The district overall did have expenditures over $750,000 for federal awarded funds. Because of that, we were required to do, complete a single audit. The total amount of federal awards that you were awarded, or spent during the year, excuse me, was $1.9 million. When we completed our single audit, we issued unmodified opinions on that and no compliance findings associated with that separate audit along those lines, with those federal funds. You know, obviously, another big thank you to Jerry and his staff, you know, I know there's a lot going on. The school district, especially over the past year, year and a half, you guys have constantly been dealing with changing environments, new things all the time, so, you know, thank you for everyone in the administrative office to allowing us to come out and complete our audit and assisting us with this. Any questions?
John, how are you today? Just like, you didn't, I mean, I think it's pretty inherent, but there were no major liabilities, major concerns, major like differences between our district and other districts that would cause you alarm as part of this audit.
Correct. Now, basically, what we look at, you know, especially the district like yours, we do some very similar areas. You guys are pretty much in line with every other district that we do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say I would like to thank Jerry. This report here proves that you are amazingly good job, so I just want to say thank you for that and the administration for keeping those spending checked. Kudos to you. One other comment, has nothing to do with this, but it keeps on being brought up, and the news article just came out, and I keep on hearing this word "Peasars" over and over again. You know, we as a district, and districts across this Commonwealth, spend countless amounts of dollars feeding into this Peasars fund, as well as teachers, right? And we see just yesterday, a news report coming out, that the FBI is giving subpoenas, serving subpoenas on managers of those funds, and it really is just disheartening when we see dollars walk out a year, less opportunities for our kids, our teachers are working hard and putting in a retirement system, and now we see that the managers of these funds are being subpoenaed by federal authorities, and it's very, very disheartening when you see that. I just hope that there's something that can be done there. It's just, not on you, but just, I just see it, it's very aggravating. It's very aggravating.
Do either of our participants on Zoom have any questions or comments? No, okay. Poor Heather. Thank you, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate all of your work and the presentation.
Of course, thanks everybody.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Jerry Muth here to give us a status update on the 2021-2022 general fund budget.
Good evening. I kind of was appreciative that Justin could present those financial statements tonight because it kind of gives us perspective as to where we were at at the beginning of this fiscal year, and gives us a flavor as to where we're at going forward. Before I get into that, I just want to point out some key dates relevant. The proposed final budget will be presented for board approval on April 29th. There will be a public budget meeting on May 5th to discuss in detail the proposed final budget, and then on June 3rd, tentatively, the board votes on the final budget, real estate taxes, and homestead exclusion. Keep in mind, what I present tonight will not necessarily be where we will, what we will propose on April 29th. What I propose tonight, or on the 29th, may not be where we wind up on June 3rd. It is a dynamic process that began back in December. Various departments went through with the teachers, department heads, administrators to determine what their needs were. They went through a process of identifying what truly are needs versus wants, and then that was presented to us internally in the month of March. We sat down with the department heads and walked through painstakingly, line by line if necessary, their budgets to come up with where we stand tonight. At this point in time, the budget for '21-'22 for revenues is relatively flat. The reason for that primarily is the pandemic. We were somewhat optimistic, or I should say, I was somewhat optimistic, that the pandemic wouldn't last as long as it did into 2020-2021, but it definitely has had a depressing impact on certain levels of revenue that we have had. That being said, we're seeing somewhat of a turnaround in the latter part of this year, and our local sources remain relatively the same, state sources remain relatively the same, and the federal sources are increasing. We'll discuss that a little bit further later on, but basically, we're proposing a flat revenue change for the upcoming fiscal year. The primary components of the local sources remains our real estate taxes. We have collected roughly $50.7 million, as was budgeted for the 2020-2021 school year shown above, and the assessed values that we currently have in hand are not much more significant than that, so we don't anticipate much of an increase for the next school year. What is impressive to us at this point in time is that despite the pandemic and the impact on a lot of families throughout the country and in the township in the borough, our earned income tax collections thus far through March are actually at the same level as they were last year. With that being said, additionally, for market town business privilege taxes, they're slightly down, but I'm somewhat more optimistic than I was a few months ago as to what our collections will be going forward and its impact on the 2021-2022 budget. These may change before we get to that point. State subsidies pretty much remain flat. The primary components of that is a basic education subsidy that sits at approximately $6.2 million, a special education subsidy sits at about $2.5 million. We are also reimbursed for 50% of our contributions for social security and the pension, the Peasars that was previously mentioned, and that's approximately $6.7 million, I believe. And we also are reimbursed for transportation and debt service. Transportation subsidy is anticipated to decrease next year, and the result, that results from what we pay currently for transportation. Basically, they're reimbursed in the succeeding year based on a percentage of what we pay in the current year. Because we were out of session, we were doing a lot of virtual sessions earlier in the year, we did not have any transportation costs at that point in time, so our reimbursement obviously of a smaller amount will generate smaller revenue next year. The federal title programs are the primary components historically and currently. The title programs, Title I, Title II, and Title IV. Title I is typically used for reading specialists and a math coach, so to speak, that pays for a portion of their salaries and benefits. Title II is used for classroom size reduction, and likewise, Title IV is permissible to be used for Title II purposes, so that too goes towards the classroom size reduction, salaries and benefits for two teachers. On the expenditure side, the primary drivers again are salaries and benefits. Our biggest investment is in our people, and that continues to be the case. As was previously pointed out, the largest portion of our benefits is the contributions that we make to the retirement system. We currently pay 0.3494% for contributions to the retirement system. We also have, for the first time in several years, a slight increase in the medical insurance benefits. It's actually up 5%, but historically, that has been a very manageable expenditure for us, and we're fortunate to share the risks with other school districts in the area in that program. The next line item is basically supplies and equipment. We budgeted a little less for the current school year based on primarily making the investment in the iPads in the previous school year. We anticipate that may go up again in the next school year. Debt services and other uses remain relatively the same. The only difference between the current year and next year is there is a $500,000 contribution to the capital projects fund that is currently in the 2021-2022 budget. I also failed to discuss the purchase of services. That basically is our tuition, transportation, and technology assistance. Transportation makes up approximately $3 million of that. Tuition is equally at that level, and technology purchase services and related other purchase services is much less substantial than that. Within the expenditure variables in the next year, we have four pupil physicians that are currently being proposed and are included in that budget. They represent the salaries and benefits for a school nurse, a social worker, a school psychologist, and a student assistance counselor. Those are currently in there, they are currently being determined whether we want to include all four or a lesser number than that, but currently they have an impact of $289,000 on next year's budget. Likewise, we have currently plans to hold an online learning taught by our own personnel, and there are seven positions within the budget currently, which approximate $400,000. Right now, the interest in that program is very low, so that is a number that may be subject to change depending upon whether there's increased participation or not. There is a school of thought that contingent upon conditions, as we progress through the summer, the interest level may progress, so it is a variable that's in the budget currently. It's something we're keeping an eye on as to whether or not that's an opportunity perhaps to reduce expenditures if necessary. Likewise, there are eight delayed positions within the budget. That is something that historically we have always had, that is to address potentially increased enrollment throughout the district as we get closer to the school year. Currently, there's eight, as I said, in there with a $54,000 potential impact. Again, there may be some flexibility as we get better sense as to what our enrollment's going to be. The other two variables currently that are not necessarily definitively known at this point is we are currently in negotiations with the ESBA bargaining unit, and we also have a transportation services contract, which is up at June 30th. We currently have a request for proposals out for transportation contractors, and we anticipate having those submitted to us by April 22nd, at which time we will evaluate and then make a determination whether to proceed with a new company or the existing one. Budgetary impact at this point in time is unknown. So where does that leave us? Currently, we are sitting at a projected deficit position of $3.7 million, and it seems kind of gloomy, but if you look back historically at where we stand most years, we are somewhat in a deficit position at this point in time until we fine-tune our expenditures, identify potential resources of revenue, or other financing uses. The next slide I'm gonna propose, prepare and show to you, I guess, is not in any order of preference, it is not in any order of what is going to happen, it is just what is available on the table to us currently. So right now, previously earlier in the year, the board authorized that if necessary, we could raise real estate taxes to the index, which was 3.5%. If we elected to raise real estate taxes, by the maths, it would generate $1.9 million. As previously presented during the audit, the auditor pointed out that we also have an assigned fund balance, a portion of which is for the post-retirement system, I'm sorry, the public service employee retirement system, I apologize. It's $1.8 million available to us right now. What was not emphasized enough, I think, in the previous presentation was, we actually anticipated using that fund balance in the 1920 school year. We did not use that, so that is available to us again at this point in time, and even a larger amount is available. We also recently were allocated, tentatively under the American Rescue Plan funding, $2.9 million. 20% of that must be geared towards learning loss, which is about $581,000. The rest, we have not yet given strict guidelines as to how those may be used. The funding is available through September of 2024. Tentatively, it would make sense to us to split that over the course of three, the next three fiscal years, and make a determination as to how best to use those funds. But again, those are the three primary sources right now of revenue that are available to us. On a much more tentative basis, the governor's current budget also has projected increases for the basic education subsidy and the special education subsidy. The catch is currently those are tied to a targeted personal income tax, which more than likely is going to have some resistance, so the likelihood of that one is a little bit suspect at this point in time, whereas the three above are known factors. So that is where we stand at this point in time. Again, it's a dynamic process. We are continuing to look to reduce expenditures and also look for alternative sources of revenue. During the public budget meetings that we have had thus far, although the attendance has been low, I've been impressed by the questions and the suggestions. Things like, if we're sitting on a substantial fund balance of $13 million, why don't we consider paying down some debt and reduce our interest expenditures in the future? It's something we can take a look at. Other suggestions have been, why not look into pursuing appeals for those properties that are currently being sold that are valued at the county assessed, assessed at the county level at a much lower level? Things of that nature are something we can definitely give consideration to. That's where we stand at this moment, and I look forward to your questions or comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Muth. Do any board members have questions or comments on the presentation or the budget?
I mean, I'll say what I've said to you in conversations and several of my colleagues is that you may have mentioned, at least, that those property values are based off what they sold versus what's on, let's just say, the books. I really do believe that we're leaving a lot of money there that, you know, would now have to raise taxes, there's additional revenues there that we could generate here in the district, so it's something I'm a big supporter of, but, you know, you mentioned that there, and I really think that that could become a big win here for the district.
I'd say likewise, the charter school tuition proposal that was put forth in the budget, where they were trying to set a standard rate rather than basing it on the individual school district's expenditures, too, would be a benefit to us as well, as you previously mentioned.
Sure, maybe $9,500, absolutely.
Do you know what the financial impact would be if that passes, the charter school reform?
I believe it was gonna reduce our impact by $700,000, $800,000.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about the, are there, what potential drawbacks are there any of using the Peasars aside fund balance, those funds?
Quite frankly, they were set aside for this specific reason, the increases that were going on in the Peasars rate. It has been accumulating for a period of several years, and as Justin pointed out, we're in a very healthy position with our fund balance currently. So it would have no negative impact if an outside entity was looking at us, if we wanted to get more lending, for example. If we used that fund balance, it would not impact them and say, wow, you guys look like you're in a dire financial position.
Right.
We have a very strong fund balance at this point in time.
And it's not the kind of thing where, you know, like the American Rescue Plan funding, that's, we have been, and that's gonna go away after a certain number of time, like that's not, that impact is not, it's not a comparable sort of impact where we would apply that money this year if we just decided to, and then next year we'd be that much and more in, you know, kind of trying to scramble to figure out where that money's coming from. That's not the situation with that money.
The cautionary tale that's going around is if you go back about 10 years when the other stimulus package came through. other stimulus package came through, there were a lot of school districts that used that funding to bridge a gap.
Right.
And then almost had to raise taxes ridiculously.
Bring in twice as much than actually.
Exactly. And that's not the kind of approach we would like to take at this point in time.
Right. Do any of the board members on Zoom have any questions? Yes. Okay. Go ahead, Deanna.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I'm here. I was wondering if there had been any thought to having the main public budget be made in person, and that more people can attend.
I guess my preference would be to do one live and one virtual rather than do separate. I don't, I like the, personally, I like the in-person interaction, but I definitely will do a virtual one because I've had other requests for that.
Any other questions from Zoom? No? Any other questions to the board? Thank you so much, Mr. Muth. All right. Moving on to the finance items that will be moving on to the legislative meeting. First, I have a request for the board to approve the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, for the attached and the presentation, which we saw earlier. A request for the board to approve the renewal of the contract with Quest Tech for Educational Technology Management from July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2025. The existing agreement extension ends June 30, 2021. The extension presented for approval includes no cost increases for the next two fiscal years and a 2.5% cost increase annually thereafter. This compares favorably to the existing contract, which increases costs 2.5% annually for all four years of the contract. We have then some standard bills, the general fund bills, the food service fund bills, budget transfers, and payroll for the month of March 2021 in the amount of $3,178,120.82. I move that finance items four through nine be added to the legislative meeting agenda. There's a second?
I'll second that, please, Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I'd like to ask if there are any questions, and I'll begin with a question on item number five. Regarding Quest Tech, I have two questions. I don't know if it's for Mr. Muth or Dr. Manarino, but I was curious as to why we outsource this as opposed to doing this in-house? And then my second question was, if we had received or considered receiving any comparable bids for these services?
Two great questions. I'll take a vote. So it's something we decided 10 years ago to begin to outsource the management of our technology services, and a lot of it is based upon cost. Our employees drive the cost of all of it, like Jerry had said before. Our Quest Tech employees are not employees of the district, they're employees of Quest Tech, and so there are certain things like the PISers fund that we don't pay for those employees, and that's a significant driving factor of this. We've had a relationship with Quest Tech now for 15 years. At one point, it was just the director of technology position that was outsourced. We've outsourced the entire technology management staff since then, I think three agreements ago with Quest Tech. So there's a lot of inherent knowledge that the company has of the district, the inner workings of the infrastructure, the technology, the passwords, and I don't think it's something for the security of the district to RFP and ask for others to bid on this. Whenever, I'm comfortable with what Quest Tech does for the district. It is, you know, they're giving us a bargain as far as no cost increase for the next two years, so it's a favorable contract for the district, and there's other, you know, pieces of that relationship when it comes to the replacement of employees that benefits the district as well. So I didn't see a reason that we would want to outsource or ask for others to get into a conversation about one of the most important security features that the district has.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozerro?
Aye.
Dr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot? Oh, you missed her little.
That's okay, you can keep doctor.
Oh, Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Are you able to unmute her, or does she have to do it? Okay. Mrs. Reed, if you can hear me, we just need you to unmute yourself so you can vote. Okay, I'm just going to move on. Mrs. Spade? Yes.
Yes.
I will also vote yes. And now, Mrs. Reed, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, motion carries. All right, next up, we have education. I do have some notes here that I'll pull up for my education liaison report. The education liaisons met on March 9, and we will be meeting again next week with Dr. Williams. She provided updates to us on state assessments. At that time, there were no new updates since the board meeting. She provided a Title IX update to us, which she will be doing a presentation on shortly, so I won't go into the details of that. She provided some great updates on some of the mental health initiatives that the district has been undertaking, including Read Across America Week, Spirit Weeks, a program on promoting mental health resiliency in children and teens, programs by North Hill School District and Anchor Point, focus groups that are underway at, I know at least the high school level, a staff wellness collaborative, which is a group focused on raising awareness and offering support and resources for the overall health of our district staff, which, when we met at the time, it was going to be launching soon. She provided an update on professional development. There was a survey sent out the previous month with a focus on curriculum, data review, differentiation, pre-assessments, and grade, team, and department needs. And then she went over some of the curriculum writing, which is going to be happening this summer, including the TUCAD department, school counselors, library, media, science department, K-6 math, and K-6 computer science. So next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Williams, who will be going over Title IX overview.
Good evening. If you recall, several board meetings ago, we discussed Title IX, because I believe we did the board policy revision to board policy 236. So at that time, I was asked to provide an overview as to what Title IX looks like for the district. So very quickly or in an easy summary, Title IX basically says that any school entity that is receiving federal funds must act in a non-discriminatory manner, particularly with the emphasis with regard to someone's sex. So this has been around since the 1970s. This is not anything new, although it was recently updated in 2020. There are many different applications for Title IX. It looks a little bit differently depending upon what level you are at, because again, this runs the gamut from K through 12, as well as students in colleges and universities or any educational program. So if you look, some of the key areas that they talk about with regard to Title IX, our recruitment, admissions and counseling, financial assistance, athletics, again, sex-based harassment, discipline, all of those different issues fall under Title IX. Recent changes, as I said, just took place in August of 2020, and I think the biggest changes here that occurred with regard to that is when the federal courts found that sexual harassment was a form of sex discrimination under Title IX. So now, school districts must publicize how sexual harassment complaints are reported. We must have a mandatory response or protocol when there is a report of sexual harassment, and personnel now must need to be trained on Title IX complaints and what those procedures look like. So for us to ensure that we are doing that and complying with that, we have gone ahead and we have added, although this might mouse is, hang on one second. Mouse is maybe not clicking. Okay, yeah. Yep, that's not gonna, we have added to the website our Title IX procedures, and it can be found at the website on there, what that needs to look like, what the roles are and the responsibilities for that. I am obviously the person that you would be reporting those things to. I would be the person that you report the Title IX complaint to. I would also be the person that would be in charge of that investigation, whereas then I cannot by law be the person that makes that final decision. So if a Title IX complaint is brought to us, I can hear that complaint, I can investigate that complaint, but I cannot make a ruling on that. That ruling would be made by either Dr. Manarino or by Dr. Bazila. It also goes on and gives you a form where if you wish to report your complaint, there's a form online for you to fill that out, dependent upon whether you're a student filling out that report, or if you're considered to be under the age, I believe it is, of 16, your parent would then have to go ahead and co-sign that form. So there is a way for you to go ahead and fill out what that complaint would be. That is all located on our website. So if there are any questions, any concerns about Title IX, what our procedures are, how it would be handled, who does what, that is located on our website. The other important part of this is the training that is required in order for us to be compliant with Title IX. And I'm using the word staff, because this is not just only teachers. It is any staff member. Our coaches already are trained. I know Mr. Weber works with them, they go through a Title IX training with regard to that, but this is training for everyone in the district to be aware of what our process is, what our procedures are, and what to do if perhaps a student went after class, say, hey, I need to talk to you about an issue I have a concern, what would I would do? We want our staff members to be able, with a lot of comfort and confidence, to be able to answer that question for our students. The other part of this training has to be for students. We do have to now publicize everywhere, on our website, in our handbooks, what our Title IX procedure is, and we have to be able to have those conversations with our students so they feel comfortable with what that looks like. Now, obviously, this is a K through 12 school district, so conversations about, you know, what would you do if someone said something that made you upset or uncomfortable at an elementary age would look markedly different than conversations we would be having with our senior high students. So we need to make sure that those conversations are handled and are developmentally appropriate. So we will be looking to provide that information, developmentally appropriate, to our students next year as well. And I also just want to make sure that you know that the initial training is going to align to the updated board policy, and it's going to be in alignment with the Office of Civil Rights and what they're asking us to do and what is our guidelines from, obviously, the federal government with regard to that. I would also be remiss in saying, if you have not seen, there has been a recent update from OCR saying that they are now soliciting additional information regarding Title IX. They are going to literally be sending out surveys or making surveys available for parents, for students, for anyone who wishes to respond, because they want to look back at this Title IX legislation and make sure that it is everything that we need to be doing. So you will be seeing that soon, if you have not already seen it in the news, under the OCR, Office of Civil Rights, soliciting additional information to determine if we need to amend this legislation in any way, shape, or form moving forward. Obviously, if that were changed or there would be changes, we would comply with whatever those changes would be. Any questions for me about Title IX? Yes, Deanna?
Yeah, this is, I'm sure that some of this goes without saying, but a lot of this is obviously confidential. It's not something that we can expect to have a hearing sort of reporting on. But you mentioned at the end about, you know, the surveys. I mean, is that the kind of thing that you would be regularly reporting to the board on, like our Title IX compliance, or is it just all sort of?
The complaints themselves and the investigatory process certainly are confidential, but we need to be public in the sense that we need to make sure that we can speak to what our procedures are, have we been trained, what does this need to look like? So it will always be included in professional development, because I obviously do the professional development for the district. That will be an ongoing process of procedure with regard to that. And certainly, if there was something more where I would say, yes, there's going to be, the school counselors and our organization came in and spoke with our students today at the high school, and they spoke specifically, I don't know if that was Title IX, I could certainly provide that information to the board, but as far as the other information, it would indeed be confidential. Good question. Any other questions? Any, Ms. Philpot, do you have any questions on Zoom?
No, I'll just say thank you. That was great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Okay, next, we have a request that the board approve the IDEA use of funds agreement and notice of adoption of policies, procedures, and use of funds by the school district per the attached, and a request for the board to approve the AIU transition memorandum of understanding per the attached. I move that items three and four under education be added to the legislative meeting agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second, please, Spade.
Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozerro?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed had to leave us this evening, so she's no longer online. Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Motion carries, and I will hand it over to Mrs. Ponyatowski for athletics and activities.
We have three items under athletics and activities. The first being that the board approved a continued recognition for club softball for 2021, 2022, and approved the district reimbursement for the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $161.37. The next being that the board approved the continued recognition for ice hockey as a club sport for the 21-22 school year, and approved the district reimbursement for the 2020-2021 school year for the amount of $10,288.74. And also that the board approved the continued recognition of inline roller hockey as a club sport for the 2021-2022 school year, and the reimbursement for the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $1,509. And all three of these clubs have met the guidelines of qualifications set forth for continued recognition and reimbursement as per board policy 813, which is club sports. And there's no request from the bowling club this year, because the couple of students that showed interest chose not to participate. So we'll be looking for a new coach to bring bowling back next year, so if there's any bowlers out there. So I move that items two through four be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second, please, Spade.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Cozerro?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ponyatowski. Next, I will ask Mrs. Spade to provide an update on AW baby.
Thank you. For March and February, student of the month for baby tech, carpentry, building, and construction, autumn of the year, health, science, and technology, Morgan Newby, and I apologize if I say your name wrong, HVAC, Gage Kennedy, H3 Arts, Josie Barnes, Smartest, Julia Adink, Surgical Science, is Nadia Allen. Thank you very much. You did a great job, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Congratulations to those students, and you are still up the personnel.
Okay. Personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends, and I so moved, that the board approve personnel items one through three.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I have a motion.
Okay. We'll move on to a vote. Ms. Cozerro?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Spade. Next up, we have Mr. Little and community and intergovernmental relations.
Thank you, Madam President. First, just a quick report. Thank you, Madam President. First, just a quick report. The rest of the team for the community and intergovernmental relations, we met on April 1st via Zoom with North Hills Community Outreach, specifically with their executive director and former North Hill school board member, Tom Baker, as well as a few of the other, how do you say, leadership team over there. Just talking about partnerships, and how we can help each other and give messages out to help our community, families, and students, and things of that nature. So it was a positive meeting, and I believe that Mr. Baker will be coming here in the near future to speak to the board about more, a little bit more about North Hills Community Outreach. Tonight, we have one, one thing on the agenda here, one item I should say, excuse me, and that is the memorandum of understanding with the Ross Township and Westview Police Departments. Nice description is the board approved the MOU as written and attached between the North Hills School District and the Ross Township and Westview Police Departments. So I move that item two under community intergovernmental relations be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second that, please, lady.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Little. Next, we have Ms. Cozera and policy.
Thank you. For the policy liaison report, I wanted to note that we are almost through the review of some of the least frequent, or least recently reviewed policies. We've been working on that project for almost a year and a half now to kind of go through the policies and update where needed. And also, it's, our wellness policy is due for an update, and so we will be, I don't want to take Ms. Philpott's thunder from, she's gonna talk about that later, but that's part of the process. We'll be doing that sort of in the next, in the coming meetings. We'll be updating the wellness committee at the meeting, and policy updates, if needed, will be recommended. So look for that in the future, but that's, you know, that's been in progress. So that's, I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. I have an information item, which is a number of policies that we have reviewed and have determined if changes were needed. 411, seniority and suspensions, 428, salary determination, 512, evaluation of classified employees, 517, disciplinary procedures, 529, substitute compensation, and 622, fourth degree retirement plans. We have one policy for second reading, which is the policy 121, Title I comparability of services, which had some required revisions, and we discussed it our last meeting, and we did not receive any feedback on that policy or the respective changes. So the superintendent recommends, and I so moved, that the board approve policy item three.
I will second that, please, lady.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Back to you, Ms. Cozera.
Thanks. And finally, we have a couple of additional policies after first reading with some more substantial changes. We have our policy 321, 421, and 521 dealing with political activities for employees of the district, just making some updates to the language in that, in those policies. We have, under 809, we have some transportation policy revisions. Now, I want to clarify that this is separate from the contract that we talked about, and actually unrelated to the contract. These are changes in state law that require some updates to our policy, and you'll see that the policy contemplates a third party providing our transportation. The actual state requirements that were put in place, deal, in the language that we had to work with, deal with employees of the district needing to, you know, go through certain clearances and that sort of thing. And we are, you know, we're saying that the, our third party carrier is providing that, you know, confirmation, and that we are, that we are compliant with the law, and as are they. And then the final one is policy 914, relations with the intermediate unit, some revisions to that policy as well. So I move that policy items five through nine be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second that, please, lady.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, my, I had an issue. Is there any discussion?
I have, I have two questions.
Yeah.
The first one, I don't know if it would be for Dr. Manarino or Mr. Ruth, but about the transportation policy. I'm just wondering if you can give some more information on the kindergarten paragraph. It says that we do not provide transportation solely for kindergarten students. So if a current bus stop exists, and other students assigned to it, then we will transport kindergarten students. But if it was just a stop for kindergarten students, we would not do that. And I'm just wondering if you can explain, I mean, have we ever had an issue where we've had to, where we've run into that, and is there history on to, as to why that would be the case?
I think the primary reason to have other individuals at the bus stop is to make sure that the student isn't left alone by themselves from a safety perspective. There have been occasions where, despite what the policy says, in some circumstances where we wouldn't accommodate if necessary. But again, we don't like to leave a single child of that age by themselves. I believe it's the history.
I can, Ms. Philpott, I can speak from experience that, you know, if that does come up, that the transportation department can be contacted if a, if a student is assigned to a stop that actually makes things less safe for the kindergarten, which is like what happened in my situation, and I contacted the transportation department and worked out an alternative. So that's, you know, that, while that is in the policy for that reason, that's, there's, you know, if somebody has a concern, they do have a way around that, which I think, is that also a policy, or, I guess you could just pass it.
Can you say that last sentence?
Sorry, just to contact the administration if there was an issue.
And then my other question is about the, about policy 914. So with us making a change from having the superintendent be our designated liaison to having a board member be elected, would we think that would be something that we would do in December if we elect a board member position, or is that something that would broaden the length of a school calendar year? Do we, do we know how we would operate that yet?
In a year that we would not have a board member elected to the IU, which we currently do, Mr. Little serves on the IU board. So if we did not have a board member, then we could choose a representative, like we do VD representatives and some of the other things that we do in December. But now, you know, Mr. Little is on the board, so we don't have to kind of worry about that liaison, because it's him as a member of the board. So hopefully, for me, for my chair, is that we would continue to have a member of our board be elected to serve on the IU board. But in the circumstances that we don't have that, that's when we would have to appoint a liaison.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or questions? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. And Ms. Cozera, do you have a legislative report this evening?
Not this evening.
Okay. And then we will move on to Ms. Philpott and support services.
Okay. For my liaison report, the support services team has continued to work on menu updates for next year. We haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting. There is one tomorrow morning, so the next meeting, we should have an update for the board. And then I have two informational items this evening. The first is about transportation services. So the district's current transportation services agreement expires June 30. A request for proposal for a new five-year transportation services agreement is published and circulated to potential transportation contractors, which promises are due April 22nd, and will be submitted to evaluation before presentation for more consideration. And then the second informational item is about the solar project that we've been talking about sporadically over the course of this year, and we have an update to that. At no cost to the district, World Connect Energy Center, for assisting, had been engaged to evaluate monthly solar options for the rooftop campus. Specifically, they conducted a request for proposal process, which included evaluating solar developer responses and providing recommendations on a project and project partner. But after review of four competent responses, World Connect included that such a project would not be financially viable at this time. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Philpott. We will next move on to the Westview Ad Hop Committee. I have a brief update on that. A request for proposal has been published for construction management services for this project. Several companies have already expressed interest, and site visits are being accommodated upon request. Proposals are due April 16, 2021, and then the committee will be evaluating the responses shortly thereafter, and we'll have another update for the public. Okay, at this time, I will ask if we have any public comments on non-agenda items. There's nobody attending in person, but perhaps on Zoom. If you do have a public comment on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand virtually. Nobody? All right. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for next Thursday, we print today, April 15, 2021, right here in the North Hills Middle School LGI Room at 7:00 PM. I also want to let you know that the North Hills High School Drama Club's spring musical Songs for a New World will be shown online next Friday, April 16, and Saturday, April 17. The pre-recorded and edited show will be streamed as a live event beginning at 7:00 PM each night, and tickets can be purchased for $10 per device online at showtickets4u.com, which is linked from the North Hills website. I'm really excited to see this, for personal reasons, seeing as my son is in it, but I also always love our high school productions. So this is really exciting for us, and I'm sure a lot of people are watching as well. Okay, with no other items this evening, I will move to adjourn the meeting. Have a good evening.